Mary, roll call. I'll come back. Vince?
Vin Colonna Hebron.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin Hebron.
Jean?
Jean Wilson Marlborough.
Rob?
Rob Shadow Hebron.
Lori?
Lori Blake Andover.
Mary, are you with us? Mary, you're muted. Okay, is Joe with us tonight?
I don't see him on yet, Stephanie.
Okay. Is there anybody I missed?
I think Jessica just logged in.
Okay. Hi Jess, we're doing roll call.
Am I on?
Yep.
Jessica Dapsis from Hebron.
Okay, Mary just left the meeting. She's probably having some issues too, so we'll hope she gets back. Is there any, are there any other board members that I have missed or are just joining us? Okay, we'll move on to administration. Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny?
Penny Brizgill, interim high school principal.
Michael?
Michael Cerusi, middle school principal.
Are there any of our vice principals with us tonight? No? Okay, Eva?
Eva Gallup, business manager.
And is our board clerk with us tonight, Karen? Candy Coletta, Lo, are you here? Okay, that means that we're gonna need to take minutes. I don't think Sue's gonna be here tonight. Is there, are there any volunteers to take minutes for tonight's meeting?
Sure.
Thank you Lori. Mary, did you make it back on? I'm not hearing Mary. Scott, if you say Mary coming back on, could you let me know?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, have I missed anybody for roll call?
The athletic director is on.
Okay, go ahead Dan.
Dan Trudeau, Athletic Director.
All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll go on to our public comment portion. Hebron Andover and Marlborough Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Ed Public Meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments? Go ahead Shannon.
Yes, I have some comments.
Okay, go ahead Dieter.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Dieter Zimmer and I am the liaison for the Marlborough Board of Finance. And we're asking to use your quote-unquote access fund, 1%, which you have from your favorable audit report, to use this to offset your capital expenses. The reason for this is, okay, you may read in the papers and said Marlborough quote-unquote is in very good shape. They got a grant list increase from 1.89% etc., etc. And I thought this is all a little bit misleading. I called this a bonus, said we got a bonus this year for approximately $1 million, which is 154,000 which we received as credit from Ram, 100,000 which we received as debt payment which we pay less. Then we also had a favorable audit report and then we have an increase in our grant list. All good things, very good things for Marlborough, no question about it. However, misleading is that the grant list, a grant list increase is driven, the biggest driver there is revaluation of our property. That means that we automatically have a tax increase if we are increasing mill rate or not. And that is, then we're at this point from Regent A, we have an increase of 670,000, which reflects in 6.5%. It's the driver there is a change in enrollment. Then we have from the Board of Ed from Marlborough, elementary school, 380,000 dollars increase, which is roughly 5%. And the town operation is also 110,000 increase by 2%. That means, so you can see where our so-called bonus goes already. And that is, doesn't include, so the fire department comes and they like to have a new rescue vehicle, which costs 600,000 dollars. This concludes in road construction which we have on plans. So there's a 5.5 million project which is scheduled over the next five years. Then we have bridges to repair. It's we are non-funded, that means we do not get funds from the state or from the Fed. And there's a lot of things which we have to plan and where we could use our so-called bonus. And therefore, again, any help you can give us, that would be greatly appreciated. Therefore, we are asking to use this 1% out of the surplus from 2019, 2020, to offset your requested capital expenses. Stephanie, thank you to let me speak.
Thank you. Shannon?
I think I've got it this time. Thank you very much. These questions were asked of the Andover Board of Education, so I am now asking them of the Ram Board of Education. And in a half an hour, I'll be asking them at the Andover Board of Selectment. And I know it's public comment, so you're not going to respond. And I apologize, I didn't get these questions you ahead of time. But I think it's important for us to have the information before we decide upon your budget. The first question is, what savings did the Ram schools have during the pandemic? And what was that money then used towards? For example, at the Andover Board of Education, we had $189,000 that we just thoroughly defined for the Board of Finance, for their consideration as to how we pushed that money towards last year's budget and what it was used for, because we were closed for three months. So I'd like to know from Ram, what savings did you, I don't know, it's not incur, but what savings did you gain during the pandemic? And then what have you received as far as SRR funding, both SRR 1 and SRR 2? I believe I saw the SRR 2 was 126,000. But I'd just like to know definitively, what did you receive for SRR 1, SRR 2, coronavirus relief, and now the American relief package? I know in Andover Elementary School, we're not receiving anything from American relief, because it's defined by Title 1 in this year, and we're not receiving Title 1 in this upcoming fiscal year. So that's just the information I would like. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead Greg.
Good evening Stephanie. Similar theme to Dieter's comments, I'd ask that the board consider using the retained 300,000 towards its capital request. I'd point out that the debt service will drop considerably in FY '23 by approximately 1.5 million, which would open up opportunities for additional spending without burden on the contributing towns.
Thank you Greg. Any other public comments? I think you're muted. I hear, I see your mouth moving.
Yeah. Stephanie, it's Mal Leichter from Hebron.
Okay, go ahead Mal.
Thank you very much. Hebron, unlike the other two towns, doesn't face this, this increase. But we, we've discussed this between Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, other town officials and the town manager. And we believe that whatever help we can give to the other towns, we need to do that. Obviously, Hebron was behind the, the capital program when you put it in, and they still are. And they don't want to see the buildings not be, and the grounds not be maintained. But this has been a very unusual year, and we strongly support having the money used to reduce the levy, especially for Andover and Marlborough. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard work in putting this budget together. I've spoken with Scott a couple of times, and it's really been a pleasure working with Ram this year. So, thank you.
Thank you Mal. Are there any other public comments?
Go ahead Shannon. Shannon, again, just to, we've heard from Marlborough and Hebron, so we might as well hear from Andover. I know in Andover, we're looking at a 6.5% potential increase, depending on what the Board of Finance does, simply with the Board of Education's budget. We're looking at a potential 2.5% increase just for the town. So while I greatly appreciate, obviously, I've put, my Board of Education has put money into our non-lapsing account the last couple of years before this very strange prior year, and I'm very much in favor of that. As Mal said, this is a very unique year, and we're facing a very significant potential increase in our mill rate. So any money that we could get back as a town would be especially appreciated in this upcoming fiscal year. So thanks very much.
Thank you Shannon.
I kind of figured to stop this Shannon would ask.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Mal. Any help we can get to the other surrounding towns, you know, we would love to do. We do know that the debt service for next year is gonna go down significantly. So unless there's something that needs to be done this year that's, you know, really chronic, we would recommend that you give the money back to the towns.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Stephanie, Joe O'Connor, 75 Smith Farm Road.
Hi Joe.
Hello. I, I hear everything that the towns just been saying. I think, you know, last year was a negative budget. People seem to forget that. When I first got on the board, there was money given back to the three towns in substantial amounts of money. And that, during that period, there has been, there was nothing being done to our buildings. I think we put a good faith effort, as Mal said, you know, he supports the capital. We, we've implemented, bifurcated the budget to put capital in our budget. I read the River East every week. I look at all these towns, East Hampton, Portland, Marlborough, Andover, who haven't done their job in putting capital money aside. Hebron has done a phenomenal job every year and, you know, with CIP. It's paid off. So I, you know, it's, it's, I hear and I appreciate everybody's concern, give the money back. But we do have a lot of needs, and I would like, as a taxpayer, to see those needs to be put back into our infrastructure as they have been. I've heard some negative comments, you know, comments that I, I think are hypocritical from some town leaders, saying that you want all the money back. We have a huge surplus. You're getting some money back. But it also needs to be stated that we have, we have needs ourselves for this school. And this school is what's drawing people to your communities. It's drawing, Marlborough is now number two in the state for places to move to. Andover is a beautiful city. Hebron is a beautiful city. And if you think that not putting money back into your investment is, is, is the way to go, then I strongly would disagree with that. We've had a good plan going forward. Next year, everybody talks about the debt going down. We're gonna still have capital needs. So I, I don't see, you know, I just want people to be cognizant of the fact that last year was a negative budget, and a lot of people weren't happy about that either. So I, I appreciate, you know, everybody's efforts, but, you know, we have, we'll, we'll make those decisions, I think, as we, as we see fit. But as a taxpayer, I want to see my money go into, back into the education, back into maintaining our facilities and grounds, as well as our programming for education. Thank you.
Thank you Joe. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll go into our budget workshop. Scott?
Thank you Stephanie. What, what I think I'll do to start with is to, and really to get the board conversation going, is to share the, to share the material I shared earlier with the board members, just to give some context to some of the numbers we're looking at and put some context to some of the capital spending. So the, the surpluses we're, we're looking at are the 2019-20 audited surplus in the total amount of $753,931. This is, this is obviously a very high number and attributed much of that to COVID last, you know, last year in terms of us, us being out for a good portion of the year. The offset credit to the towns, the amount above 1% is the $448,972. And I think I've shared with the towns already what that offset will look like based upon the percentage enrollment in each of the towns using last year's, last year's data. The 1% non-lapsing account, or the offset credits that the board has to work with this year is $304,959. So it's the 304,959 that the board has control over at this point. The, the district has a master capital plan, and these are the items that were earmarked for the current cap, proposed capital budget for '21-'22. So these items still remain in the capital budget. And the reason for each of these items, and I'll share the items that didn't make it into the capital budget in the next slide, but the reason for each of these items was either health and safety purpose, or it was a, something that was seen as, as an immediate necessity. So for example, the first one with the eco-rolls for the gym floor. For the first time since we've been in the building in 2003, we sanded the floor, the gym floors, down to bare wood, repainted, refinished. These would, these are floor, a floor protection system that would facilitate all of the non-athletic use that our gym withstands. It includes career fairs, college fairs. We, we have tables set up in the gym currently for overflow placement of students due to the need to keep students distance. We use the gym for graduations, blood drives. We had a vaccine event in the school, and I think we would have used the gym had we had some floor protection. So this basically is, is an all-purpose protection that, that supports each of those events. The next few items that are earmarked as stair treads and some carpet replacement, these are items that have been in the proposed capital budget for a number of years and kind of got pushed off each year. And due to their condition, it was felt like these are really, they're not necessarily immediate safety issues, but they will be shortly. So these are really, the treads in particular really need to be replaced. The two air conditioning units service the head-end room off the media center, which supports our servers. That, that system is no longer reliable. And the air conditioning unit for our lighting control room in the auditorium, which generates a significant amount of heat as well. And, and those are units that are no longer reliable, and so therefore need to be replaced. The cameras were in the third year of a three-year camera upgrade replacement system. The saw cuts for the tennis courts allow us to maintain the integrity of the tennis courts. It's, it's basically the necessary upkeep. The irrigation upgrades allow us to more effectively manage our irrigation system, which currently does not always produce the amount of water we need, or sometimes it goes off at random times. It needs an update, and this would provide us with a water-saving update, which would be very efficient. And we, we have repair work that needs to be done on the concrete around campus, some of it being a safety issue. So we've seen each year some money earmarked for concrete. So the $299,490, this is in the budget. This isn't extra funds. This is already what's in the capital budget is listed. These are the items that are in the capital master plan that the facility subcommittee, we decided not to include in this year's capital budget. I'll, I'll give you a very brief rundown of this. The, the first item, the first two items actually go together. The, when the high school was built, the, although the plans called for it, air conditioning units were never installed in the locker room, gym classroom area, weight room area. This past year, we installed air conditioning into the locker rooms, I'm sorry, not the locker rooms, into the weight room and the gym classroom, the PE classrooms. The only area left without any air conditioning are the locker rooms. It's, you know, is that critical? Is, not necessarily critical, but from a, certainly a building management process, it's something that will need to be done. Right now, the doors are left open in the gym. It's highly inefficient to be carrying air-conditioned air from the gym through into the locker rooms and then out into the hallways and outside. So, you know, eventually that will need to be done. The engineering fees are necessity to make sure that it's planned correctly. Third item, $15,000 for landscape redesign of the main entrance. This has been in the, the budget for a few years. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that we look at this at this point. This was an idea to redesign the front of the building for security purposes. This, again, this is just the architectural design phase of this. We'd be looking at, yeah.
May I ask a question? Okay, I have had an extremely long day, so forgive me. But I'm trying to understand what Mal Leichter said and what, what you said. And this slide right now of unfunded, these are not necessarily recommended for right now? Is that accurate?
Judy, these are the, in the district's long-term capital plan. These are items that were earmarked for 2021-'22. When we met with the facility subcommittee, we pulled out these items, which are currently in the capital budget.
And so those were prioritized?
Yes, these are prioritized. So I, I, I'm showing you these just on the off-chance that the board may, you know, ask the question, what wasn't funded in our capital plan? What other items were in the '21-'22 capital budget? And these are those items.
Scott, would you specifically during this speak to what the representatives from Marlborough, Andover, and Mal Leichter said, so that those of us who are not on facilities are crystal clear? Or can they speak to things? I think with this format of a meeting, they can actually.
Well Judy, I think when I finish this, I think I'm, I'll show you exactly what they were suggesting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so just, I'll, I'll go through this quickly. So the, again, the landscape architecture for the redesign of the front entry certainly wouldn't be something I would recommend at this point. Painting of the walls of the gymnasium, again, that's not something that necessarily is critical, needs to be done right away. The next two items, the replacement of the floor in the kitchen, again, although something that needs to be done, I wouldn't recommend it at this point, mostly because we're still gonna be serving lunch through the summer, and so the, the timing is, isn't right at this point to even move forward with those. But I wanted to at least, you know, show those to the board so that you knew, you know, if you're wondering, what are the items that were originally scheduled for '21-'22 that didn't make the approved capital plan? These are those, those items. If the board chooses not to use the 1% for any additional purposes, and Judy, I think this answers your question, and you use that money to offset the levy to the towns, this is what we'd be looking at. And these percentages are based on this year, so this would be, I'm sorry, last year. On the 2019-2020 levy calculations, they're a little different than this year's because the populations have changed. But nonetheless, this would be the result if, if the entire 1% was used to offset the budget. And I think that's all I had. So Stephanie, I share that really to, I guess, to, to start the discussion.
So Scott, can you, something that we through the years have really asked our superintendents to do, is to give us their balanced opinions of meeting the needs of the towns and providing the best education we can within fiscal constraints and certainly doing necessary building maintenance repairs. And, and I guess I'd like to hear, what is it that, that you are recommending? I think for me, I've been on the board, as I say, every meeting, the longest. You know, to hear our friends from Hebron saying that they support Marlborough and Andover goes, goes a long way, as well as, you know, all of the towns have, through this tough economic time, have been supportive of Ram. You know, so we certainly want to work very cooperatively with the towns and, and be mindful. But we don't want to, as folks say, we're not the Board of Finance, we're the Board of Education. So Scott, can you give us your well-thought-out kind of recommendations as superintendent? And maybe how to thread the needle here?
Well Judy, I think that if you, again, if you look at the work of the facility subcommittee at this point, I think that the subcommittee did a, did a great job of identifying, I'm gonna pull my screen back up just so I can, did a, did a great job of identifying those items in the facilities master plan that were most critical for health and safety purposes. And those are in the capital funding that is currently part of the proposed '21-'22 budget.
But that's using the 1%.
No, this is this is money that's already in the budget. You know, if you look at our operating budget and our
Yes, okay.
So these are already there. None of these have to be added.
Okay.
Those are already there.
So health and safety is essentially handled and we will be in compliance and meeting mandates.
Correct. Correct.
Scott, this is Jessica. I just have a lot of numbers in my head. I I know there was the need for some repair on some of the fire doors also. Is that in another area?
That is so right now, that is a, yes, it's in another area in that it's it's there's the possibility of using money from this current fiscal year to cover that work. I think more importantly, the facility subcommittee has a meeting tomorrow with the Hebron Fire Marshal to explore exactly what it is that we need to complete out of those, out of that inspection. It's still unclear to us at this point, how much of the, to what extent we need to do all of the work. And just so everybody understands, we were required for the first time this past summer to do a full inspection of the fire doors and the fire damper systems in the building. The state has been, I think, moving through different types of facilities. So for example, they they've they spent the last 10 years and started looking at residential facilities and now they're they're into schools. And the the results of that inspection came up with a lot of of fixes to the fire doors that are very expensive. And our fire dampening system. We're still in discussions with the Fire Marshal as to, are we using 2003 fire code or use current fire code? You know, what what of those recommendations are are mandated? Which are those are things that could put off for, you know, time? So we're still looking at what the requirement will be to complete those repairs.
So Scott, it's Kathleen. I guess I might want to be clear. Is it, is it, is it our job today to vote on where the money goes? Because it doesn't sound like it would be a good decision to decide without knowing what the Fire Marshal would recommend and if we would have the money for that for safety purposes? It was, I I just not sure.
We we believe we have the funding available in this year's budget to cover that work. So that's one, one option would be to cover it with existing funds from the 2021 budget. The the board will need to decide what to do with the 1% surplus, the 304,000. That that will be something that the board will will need to decide prior to certainly the April 4th hearing when the but when the board adopts the budget. And the decision the board is going to need to make is how much, if not all of that 304,000 is used to offset the levies for the three towns? And what if any additional capital expenses you'd want to purchase with those?
So the things that are listed in unfunded capital projects are those things that have been sitting for a while and now they're coming up through the cycle of capital funds? Some of them I've I've heard in the past, like the kitchen floor, but I didn't know if those were things that the facilities committee had discussed and they were now they're, you know, they come to the table.
Well, they they have been, they've been discussed. Some of those items for multiple years with the subcommittee. And the subcommittee's work up to this year has been that those items are still items that aren't so critical that they need to be done at this time. And again, the reason for the other items appearing in the proposed capital budget and not those items. Because if you know, if you look at, if you look at last year's capital budget, last year's capital budget was about 340,000. And this year's capital budget's 299. So, you know, one of the things that I think the subcommittee could have done is they could have probably added some of those items and kept the capital budget at a at a flat rate, you know, at 340,000. But it was decided in our meetings that that list of unfunded items, Kathleen, were really not critical enough to warrant including in this current budget.
But it was also decided in that meeting that you said we would use surplus funds to finance those. That was part of the main reason why I agreed to a lower.
Okay, yep. And and again, that's why I bring them out there because that is one of the options to take a look at those. Yep.
There was a discussion to utilize some of the money, the money for those capital projects. Is that what occurred? I want to be sure that we're all on the same page, especially those who are not part of the facility subcommittee because we're not. I I I don't know what goes on there.
Rob, do you want to?
Sure, I can only speak for me, Kathleen, but you know, I I wasn't a fan of the lower capital this year because again, we're just keeping kicking the can down the road. So I was assured that we would be using some of the capital funds so all these projects wouldn't be pushed off, you know, because in the next two to three years, we've got a roof bill coming in that I believe is like five to six million dollars. And we can't all of a sudden turn that into seven million dollars because we're not funding everything. So I was under the impression that we were gonna pay for a lot of these that we pushed into the other column with the surplus funds from either this year or last year.
Yeah, we do. We did discuss using some of the funds for for the the capital that we decided to to put off. One of the things that a recurring theme that I hear from the various town officials that we've spoken to throughout the weeks is the 1.5 million, you know, reduction in our debt services next year. And that they would understand if our capital went up next year and we use some of that that money to to enhance our our capital expenditures. So that is something to think about. Next year, we are going to to have quite a reduction. So it might be a good time to to get caught up on some of that. My worry is that the capital budget next year, when the voters go to vote and we're bifurcated, that it's going to look like a, you know, a 500% increase. I'm exaggerating, but you know, a huge increase and and it wouldn't pass. So even though it, you know, the the thought is is sound and and, you know, the the opportunity is there. What is it going to look like with it for the taxpayers? So you know, do that? That's just my thought.
Stephanie, can you remind us who is on facilities, please?
Sure, it's myself, Sue, Rob, Joe and Vin.
So, hold on. So five people, so three from Hebron, one from Andover, one from Marlboro?
That would be correct.
Okay.
I just had a question for Scott. I I also, we also, I was in that discussion regarding the using some of the surplus funds and lowering, keeping the capital budget low to help out the overall budget. As Joe had mentioned, that we were at a zero, a negative budget last year and and wanted to continue to be practical with 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 the budget. Scott, are we talking about funding the current capital budget so that that would come off the budget? Or are we talking about a return of the funds as a credit to the levy?
I think that that's a great question and Vin, and I think it's an important question because I would not recommend using surplus specifically to cover those capital items because, again, that would reduce the capital budget and and exaggerate any increase going into next year. I would suggest like last year, the board chose to use surplus to cover some of the overages for the DOT project. They used 50,000 for some switches. And then they gave about 90,000 as a offset to the levies for the three towns. And I would suggest that any of the current surplus money that you may decide to use for that purpose be used specifically as an offset as opposed to using it to purchase anything from the capital plan.
Scott, do we have, I I know that we have slides comparing things. How far back do we have both what we've returned to the towns? And what we've been spending on capital? Because I I mean, we focused a lot on facilities as is and was appropriate. And we've had a pretty, in my opinion, aggressive facilities plan, which is which is great. But as, but I'd like to really see that all condensed. Is that together in 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 the slides somewhere that you can point out or in our budget book?
I Judy, I don't have one slide that has information. That's certainly something we could easily put together.
Do you know what I mean? Because it's, I mean, I I really feel like I understand the different perspectives and things that are being shared. We've made great gains and we don't want to go backwards, in my opinion. That being said, I, you know, hear the folks from Marlboro and Andover loud and clear. And I feel like they've been supportive and we want to, you know, work with them. So I just want to really be able to digest the numbers and what we've done in the last number of years a little bit better. So if you could put that together, I would appreciate that.
Yep.
Lori, did you want to say something? Did you have something earlier? You you looked like you had something to share.
I did. Thank you. I was just asking a question, clarification of exactly, I think you may have answered it. Exactly what we were voting on, right? So the what was in what's in the capital budget is in the operating budget. Those items are happening. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about those unfunded items. If the 1% doesn't go back to towns, we're talking about funding the unfunded items. Okay, that's what I I deduced that through further conversation, but at the time that I waved, that's what I was just wanting to clarify.
Right. And and again, if I could just go back, I'm going to share my screen again. And 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 we're saying, Lori, funding those items, because again, those are the items that, you know, the facility subcommittee has been focusing on in terms of looking at the long term plan and those items that were scheduled for being addressed this year. You know, if you look at this list, you know, the first two items, the replace the air conditioning units for the locker rooms. This is the only part of the building that currently does not have any air conditioning whatsoever. I know Mike Schleyoffer has talked to us, you know, the committee level about how inefficient that is. And it means that we're pulling air conditioning from different parts of the building into this unair conditioned part. Any of you who have walked in this area, down this corridor in the early fall, late spring, summer knows what having your locker rooms without any air conditioning does for the air quality of that part of the building at least. You know, that that is that 1,000, that 195,000 and the $15,000 engineering fees. You know, that is that that is a job that is going to need to be completed, whether it does this year. If you don't do it this year, you're going to have to do that one sooner or later. I think you can skip over the landscape architecture. I think you can skip the painting. I think the and the the floor replacement. There is, I think there is actually one more item. It's about 15,000, which is for carpet replacement in room 114, one of the faculty offices. That is, you know, we're talking 20 year old carpet that that needs to be replaced. But I think the air conditioning is probably the, you know, that the biggest of those projects that that will need to be addressed. Again, if not now, it's going to have to be addressed sooner than later. Lori?
So I just want to sort of say, I guess my concern is that, I mean, I I understand what what the towns position many towns are in, right? Being such an unbelievable year. But my concern is if we have the 1% that could be put toward those things that at some point absolutely need to be done. There is no guarantee that in the future that's going to be there. There's no guarantee that that percent amount is going to be there for those unfunded items. And then the other items that are now critical or essential items that need to be done. And so I worry that we'll spend endless years playing catch up in an effort to try to be extremely fiscally reserved this year because of everything that has happened. And it's sort of like a catch 22, right? Because not, not one perspective is right or wrong, right? They're both extremely valid. But I just know how things have a way of building up in budgets and staying on the forever to do list. And we're not talking about, you know, the AC unit is 195,000 plus the engineering fees. That's not $20,000. Not that $20,000 isn't a lot of money, but that's a huge difference. And that just worries me if it's put off.
I see Joe and Vin with their hands up. Wonder if you want to go? Joe? Joe, are you there?
Steph, I already asked my question to Scott about.
Judy, I see your hand up.
Yeah. Scott, when you put that sheet together, so we are spending money on capital this year. I would like to understand how that compares to, and I understand we have an aging building, but to the last number of years, I'd like to know how far off that is because I'm not sure this is a fiscally conservative budget. Maybe it is, but but I'm I'm not sure on the capital side that that it is. So I'd like to see that, please.
Okay, yep.
Joe, did you have something? I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
So this is Jean. I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jean.
So my question is, I do the same thing. I have window air conditioning and I pipe it into my living room during a heat wave. It sounds like you're doing the same thing at the high school for these locker rooms. Do we have any cost analysis on how much that is costing us? That sounds unbelievably expensive to be piping air conditioning in from other places or air. Is it just air or is it air conditioning?
Yeah, Jean, it's air conditioning. It's in no way a we're not air conditioning the locker rooms that way. I want to be clear, you know, the the cool air does move through there. It in no way conditions those that room.
I get you. My living room is the same way. It'll lower at five degrees, but it's nothing like actually having air conditioning. And it's not clear to me that it's very efficient, cost wise. Do you have the numbers on how much it's costing us to do this?
I don't have those numbers offhand, no. Get those.
An estimate?
We can, yes, we can. I can certainly try to get an estimate for that. And again, that's more of a cost and efficiency than it is a actual, when you think approach.
Joe, are you with us now?
I, I logged back in. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, first couple of things. Uh, Judy, uh, Scott Flair was on the um, facilities committee before he resigned. So that's the representative from Marlboro. Secondly, I'd like to thank Lori for what she just said about um, the uh, trying to get money when you, when you, when you do these types of things. I think the history of RAM has been just that. We have, we have gotten to scenarios and been listening to, you know, the needs of the three towns. But at the same time, when we, we, we forego our capital needs, we've seen um, for the last, I'll say 10 years, uh, I came on the board in 2013 and I think we know what we had here then. The, the, the design of bifurcating the cap, I want to remind everybody that the, the intent of the, the capital bifurcation process was specifically so we would fund and be very transparent to the taxpayers. Everything that we decided we were going to do in our capital facilities committee, well, it was, was again, very transparent. And I agree with Rob, we, we've been lowering the capital every single year. Our first capital year, I think we were at $550,000. And that was a catch-up year. We still have all these needs. Now we continue to, you know, be pigeonholed into this, um, you know, I, I don't know what to really call it. This, it's, it's a tactic though. And it's, it doesn't seem to resonate with a lot of people, but we do have needs, air conditioning. And the design of, of the capital budget system was, you know, by the state regulations. We are allowed to do this. We set it up. And if this was done back when the school was set up initially, we probably wouldn't have been in a lot of these problems that we've had and had to overcome. So, you know, again, I said earlier in, in public comment, you pick up the newspaper and you look at all the towns that are in trouble trying to do what Lori is, you know, articulated, catch-up. I hear the towns, but I see their budgets coming in at 6%, 5%, 7%. And, you know, we have a responsibility and I, and I think, you know, Scott Leslie is, is seeing a lot of this through his career. We have taken it upon ourselves to, you know, kind of listen, but also do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers from our perspective on facilities and making sure that we have these monies to be able to fund these things in the future. I would also just point out too, that the design of that capital budget is we can take this money. Some towns actually have 2%. We're only, as a regional school district, allowed to only carry 1%. And the, 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 another um, avenue in that capital budget uh, from the state is to put that money towards future projects and we can plan. Maybe we don't have a need for it right now. I'm sure the towns have a need for it, but we have, we have that avenue, legal avenue to put money. Let's say we need $75,000. We can put it into the capital non-recurring for sick and wellness. We're, we're, we're seem to be fixated on facilities, but we do also have a lot of other sides of things too with teachers' uh, retirements and sick and wellness and all that stuff that, that, that does cost an awful lot of money. When you, when you go through a, a, a downsized or whatnot. So I want to remind, you know, the, the, the people that we hear you, but it's, we, we do have capital needs. And, and, and you can see from the trend, we have gone from half a million down to 300,000. And, and that has been purely because of the town's needs, asking us to cut, cut, cut. And us being also respectful of the town's needs to try and have a, a balanced approach. So uh, I, I think there's a lot of good conversation here, but there's, there's also a, you know, we, we, we have done what other people before us have not done and have just cut, cut, cut and to get to a, to get to a number. And again, I, I will strongly just attest to last year. I think last year was a more difficult budget. And we all uh, did a, I think a really phenomenal job coming in and where we came in at a negative and, and, and I think that was, it showed, it showed a lot that we're at negative point one, and this year we're at a 1.86 and the surrounding towns are at, you know, higher numbers than that.
Stephanie, I have my hand up.
I see that Judy. Go ahead.
Joe, are you done?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Judy.
So I, I just want to be clear. I really hope that no one is shaming anyone or also additionally praising someone if we're all trying to ask questions. I mean, I'm going to ask both Greg Lowry and Dieter to reach out to me because they are in the town I'm in and I want to understand this better. And um, I, I guess I do appreciate the work everybody's done. And I would hope that people would understand and appreciate that I'm trying to be respectful as well. I mean, let's face it, it's, it's, we know we're the board event, but it's easier to support things than to ask questions. So um, I just feel, you know, that we need to all be incredibly respectful. We are representing all of our communities and um, I, I do appreciate the work that facilities has done. But I just want to understand this better. And I still have that request, Scott, to go back at least 10 years. And I'm going to reach out to both Dieter and Greg and I ask that they reach out to me, please. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Judy. Any other thoughts or questions?
Stephanie, it's Kathleen. Um, with Judy's request, then are we waiting to see that information? You know, I, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, with, with the pandemic and all of that, that is necessary to make requests from any town to support the communities. I, I want to be clear that I, I totally understand that, whether it's, no matter what community is. Our job as the Board of Education, though, um, we've been, you know, put in place to support all of the towns and ultimately to support RAM in itself. The subcommittees are making um, recommendations that they think are important. And I don't want to discredit the work that goes into that. But I also want to be able to um, be, I don't know what the word is, but I, I want the towns to understand that I know that they're looking to support their communities, but that's what we're here for, ultimately to support RAM. And sometimes that does have a, a price tag attached to it. I know Rob said it recently, and I know I've said it before as well. We are not the Board of Finance. We are the Board of Education and we able to support that, we need to be able to support RAM in itself. I do get worried because I am an educator and I see what happens with budgets when we put stuff off. It doesn't, it doesn't come to fruition. Um, it, it does get pushed off because other things become emergencies. Um, it just happens. It's not malicious. It's not, you know, nobody's intent to not get things done, but other things happen. And in this case, you know, a pandemic happened. I, I, I'm not quite sure what to do, to be honest. I, I don't quite understand what to do. And usually that doesn't happen. Um, it's usually quite clear, but I'm hearing from the subcommittee that there was a discussion and there was an agreement about what they were going to prioritize. And then I'm also hearing, you know, I understand Scott's position as superintendent. And his job is to not only support the building, but to hear from the towns. So I, I kind of, I'm, I'm wondering if Scott's in the same, you know, kind of pickle that I am, like we're in the middle. What do we do here? Cause want to make the right decision um, to support the towns and to support RAM. I don't know that I could vote because I'm, I'm very, I just don't know what we're supposed to do right now. And I think there's some unanswered questions as well. I apologize for not being um, able to understand.
Maybe I can, can share a screen that will either clarify or make it, hopefully, hopefully it will not make it any more murky than it is. So I'm going to hope that this clarifies it. So um, when, you know, in asking what, what is it that we need to do, um, it, it really is to determine how best to earmark that one, those 1% funds. And I'm going to share this scenario too as a, um, I think that these represent or reflect, and I'd, I'd ask any member of the um, facility subcommittee to chime in as well. In, in our discussions, I think the items that we removed from that we did not include in our current um, proposed capital budget that we had the most discussion on were the air conditioning for the locker rooms, which includes the engineering fees and the re-carpeting of room 114. Again, these are both items that are in the 2021, 22 long-term capital funding. These did not make it into our proposed capital. I think in, in, when having those discussions, if we were going to use surplus funds to cover any items, those are the items, I think at the time that we probably would have identified. So, you know, in this scenario, if the board chose to fund those projects, that would leave an offset to the town of $78,000 as opposed to the full 304,000. So um, I think that illustrates that, you know, if you're not going to use all of it that you, as a offset to the towns, you, we're going to have to figure out what is the, um, the right mix to support the capital needs of the school and provide some um, offset. If, so for example, if you went with that and the board decided to use some of that funding to cover those two projects specifically, that would provide another $78,000 to be um, to offset the budget to the towns. Totalling um, with the money that's the um, money above the 1%, that would be a total of about 527,000 that is included in the offset for the town. So, you know, that's a scenario that would allow us to um, fund some of the capital needs while at the same time also providing, um, still providing an offset.
Okay, I think, um, thank you, Scott. Judy, you had a?
I, I, I do. I think it, um, it doesn't need to be now, but at some point I would like to um, hear back from Mal Leichter because I think a lot of times in governments or situations, there ends up being kind of compromised. We're not, you know, people aren't always happy. And I, I don't disagree with what Kathleen said. I, I mean, I find it kind of confusing too. And um, you know, Mal has been going to meetings as long as, as I have. And I've always looked at him as not a partisan, but as someone who, you know, really is a good level-headed thinker and, and not necessarily even tonight, but something like that would be important for, for me to hear. Because we do, I think to Kathleen's point, want to do what's, what's right. And we do want to make sure that our families are okay too, though, because I, I will say this. I know from listening to our students and then from doing other work, that people are really suffering with mental health issues. It's been kind of um, really brought to me and that finances are involved with that. So I don't know the tax burden on families and how that plays in. Because to Kathleen's point of doing what's best for RAM and the RAM community, I, I know that homes need to be okay too. So I, I think there's a lot of, a lot of information here we need. And I appreciate the um, the deep thoughts people are giving this.
Thank you, Judy. Lori?
I have, yeah, I did. Thank you. Um, I had a question. The, those scenarios were wonderful. Thank you, Scott. That really helped, uh, yeah, to um, visualize options, um, which was helpful. I, I would like to hear more if, if possible on, um, I know you said that the architectural landscape was just the design, right? So a beginning phase of that, but um, I'd like to hear more about the line that says for security. So what is, what is the current thought of the front entrance of the building? Is it, is it felt to be not up to standards for, for today's security? Is it, just if you could tell me more about that?
Um, in terms of the, the design of the building and security, the building meets current security um, expectations. And, and, and then some, you know, we've done a lot in terms of using technology to um, control access to the building. I think the, well, I, I know the reason why that piece was put in there, Lori, was the concern that the um, the front entrance was exposed to vehicle traffic. If, you know, somebody decided to drive a car, you know, straight at the building. Having said that, though, there, there are multiple parts of the building that would be just as exposed to that. So it wasn't done in response to a um, definitive, you know, shortcoming of the building that needed to be addressed. It was more a, wouldn't this be nice if, you know, we could do this at some point? So it, it really was not put in there as part of the building's overall safety plan. Like you won't find that in our um, safety plan. It was more of a, again, I think uh, it would be nice if we could do this. So I, I think I speak for the committee. I know I speak for the, for the folks in the building that it's, it's, that, that itself is not a, this, an item that's a necessity at this point. Yeah. And again, you're talking just the engineering fees there. You're likely, if you were going to redesign the front of the building to do something dramatically different than how it's currently designed, you're probably talking about a multi-hundred thousand dollar project, if not more. And, and I know that the district already has some front and center expensive projects that, that certainly would, would take precedent. So I think to, to spend that, you know, just those engineering field uh, fees now, even though they're only 15,000, would, would not necessarily be a, a wise way of spending that money. Because I don't think it would end up going anywhere.
Yeah, thank you. That's why I asked, because I didn't know if it, it was something that was a high concern or needed to be done. And this was a first step of what would have been a multi-step process.
Yeah.
Do that redesign will be in our call. So.
Definitely the first step of a multi-step process, but again, not a multi-step process. I would suggest the district um, moves down at this point.
Great. Thank you. Joe, did you just take your hand down?
No, I, I'm trying to raise. I took it down and I, I want to raise it. But uh, to add on to Lori's question, so a little more background. This was, you know, the previous superintendent's uh, design. This was not on something the facilities committee, as Scott uh, referenced, that we were probably in support of. It was what one of her future plans were to prevent the vehicles from going into the, you know, the front, the uh, center there, the library in the center. So that's kind of more of a, some more, a little bit further detail on that. I, I went downstairs while you guys were speaking and I know Mal knows this better than most. From 2006 to 2012, we gave back 1.4 million dollars to the towns. That was, that's, I got that from Donna Lanza, uh, Donna at the, I'm sorry, Elaine Griffin at the Board of Finance in Hebron. I did have asked, have asked Scott previous to Judy's question. It's about since 2012 on, what have we given back to the towns? And I, I, I know he's been working on that, like you said, for, for, he'll work on that with Judy. But uh, 1.4 million dollars has been given back to the towns um, from 2006 to 2012.
So, so someone like Mal could say that maybe we were budgeting too much? Just, just another way of looking at it?
Well, you could look at it that way, Judy. And uh, but I, I think since you're in education, you know, it's really hard to, you know, special ed needs and all that stuff that comes in and. And, you know, uh, again, we, we've, I think the board has done a phenomenal job of, of trying to get our hands around a lot of the, um, the big dollar items and specifically special education was, was one of those major dollar items that we, you know, when Dr. Law was, uh, came on board with the new special ed director we hired, we got that line item pretty much in control within two years. And you started seeing the savings and some of the waste go away. And I, I, I think, you know, those people who are involved with that need to be recognized. We have a business manager now who is, who's also done a very good job of, of giving us detailed reports that a lot of board members have asked for, to, to try and to, to do what Judy's are, you know, trying to say is that we're, you know, we're not, we're not over budgeting the towns and overburdening them. But, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into a $30 million budget. And, and I think every town recognizes that when it comes to, you know, funding from the state, special education costs. Those are, those are wild cards. And, um, you know, we, when you start seeing these kinds of, of surpluses, I think a lot of that has as a result of those, of those types of scenarios.
Jess, did I see your hand up?
It, it was, I just, um, just going through, um, the different scenarios that you had, Scott. And I guess this is for facilities also. That, that number two, were those basically really the top priorities? If you were to prioritize that list, were those the items that, were the most pertinent to, to try and take care of sooner rather than later?
Yes, I would say very much so. The, the air conditioning and the, the recarpeting in 114. You know, we, we already talked about the landscape architecture where I, I wouldn't recommend that. You know, the painting of the gym walls, you know, certainly would be nice, but that's not, um, certainly not something that's critical. The, um, and then the kitchen, replacement of the kitchen floor, I wouldn't recommend at this point because we're going to be, um, using the kitchen all summer for serving lunches, so.
Scott, how, how long do you think it's going to take to redo that floor? That's something we could do over Christmas or an April break? The only reason I say is because that's, um, the life expectancy on those floors were 15 years.
Yep.
They replaced in 2018. And I believe Mr. Schleyoffer has told us we've done almost $15,000 in repairs in the last five years to those floors. So that's something that is costing us money by not fixing, replacing.
I'm going to ask Mike to answer that one, Rob, because that's, that's a, yeah, good question.
Totally fine. And even if it's not for tomorrow, Scott, if it's for the regular board meeting, it doesn't have to be for tomorrow's.
Yeah. I, I suspect it would be more than a week based upon the size of the kid and the complexity, you know, because you got to move all the, um, the, the kitchen equipment out. And yeah, so.
I, I've got a quick question for you, Scott. You've done a great job whittling down the, the budget from an over 4% to down to 1.86. It's, it's been, um, you, it's been a great, um, great thing to watch it go down. Do you think, do you see any other, um, other reductions or do you think we've finally hit a wall?
That, that's a loaded question, right? You're asking me that question in front of all these people, Stephanie?
Well, your guess.
I'm going to guess that we may see some, some, some reductions, some minor reductions. I don't think we'll see quite what we've seen up to this point. But, but it, it won't be earth shattering, but I think that, you know, there may be some, some minor, we're still looking at one contract that, that may bring some savings, but.
Okay. I know you can't give us definite, definite ideas, but I was just wondering if, if it's finally come to a close for you, so.
We're, we're getting there. We're in the, we're, you know, the, the last lap of the mile. If you're asking me, is it going to be 305,000 in savings? I think I can definitely say no, that's, that's not going to happen.
All right. Um, did I see Jean's hand up? Yeah, Jean, go ahead.
Yes, um, just for context, so when I joined the board four years ago, there was a lot of conversations about, uh, the original plan for Ram never being quite fulfilled. And that part of this catch-up, correct me if I'm wrong, really had to do with the fact that, um, the, the plans, people just sort of chipped away at it. And so it was not a complete school in many ways. And that part of this deferred, we would call it deferred maintenance in higher ed, deferred maintenance or things that need to happen on the capital side were in the original plans. Was the air conditioning in that original plan?
Yes, the rid, the air conditioning was on the plans. We didn't pay for it. So if there's any silver lining is the fact that it, it wasn't paid for. But it, it never made it into the project.
And is that typical that you would have air conditioning in a locker room like that? I, I know with climate change, sorry, I do believe in, um, I think we can all see things are happening. It's gotten hotter and hotter earlier and like my high school never had air conditioning at all because May was ne, in Massachusetts, it never got hot and, you know, but now it gets hot. It's different. Can you talk, address that impact and, um, and share a little bit about like, how hot does it get? My office at my university can sometimes hit 86 degrees. When I was at UMass, it would, we had no air conditioning. At 86 degrees, I think you can send everyone home because it's a health issue. What is the health impact? How hot does it get? And how long is it used into the summer season?
Well, the, um, that's a great question. And it's a, it's a complicated answer in that when we, when we designed the new building, it really wasn't designed for the, um, for football coming to Ram. However, there was a promise made to the youth football teams at the time, back in the early 2000s, that, you know, there would be, you know, football would be a thing once we had our, our new competition field. Um, and we had our new building. And I'm sharing that because the original plans actually had um, much larger bleachers around the competition field and a building underneath the competition field, which would have housed some of the football changing rooms and, and some areas down there. That never happened. That got, that got value engineered out. So Ram High School right now only has what would typically be considered a locker room facility for your kind of non-football sports. Adding football to our locker room, um, one, just kind of overcrowds things, but it, it puts a lot more athletes into the locker room. And quite frankly, um, you, you mentioned climate change. I'll talk about climate change in a different context. The climate in that hallway, um, between the, the odor and the heat is, is almost unbearable in the early fall and late spring. The locker room temperatures can, you know, certainly get way above the 80s into the 90s. We do employ fans, um, whenever we can. The problem there is that now we're, we're keeping doors propped open so that we can get air movement in there, um, which, which compromises, you know, the safety locker rooms are an area that you really want to keep locked as, as much as possible.
So is it fair to say this is also a health issue for our students?
It's a health issue for anyone that goes down that hallway in the, the middle of football season. No offense to our football players, but, um.
No, I mean, in terms of heat exhaustion, potential issues like that, it's, that's very hot. And if you've just come off a field, that seems to me like it's, it's actually crosses that border into the health and welfare of our students.
It, it does. I think it does tie into that. You know, we do use the locker rooms throughout the school year, you know, we have, or, and throughout the summer. We have summer football practices now. We have teams that, that condition throughout the summer. So, you know, it's, it's rare that they're ever not being used, even in summer months. And, and most buildings now, most modern high schools, you know, their locker rooms are air conditioned. So it would be unusual not to have them air conditioned.
Well, um, perhaps if we, if, if we don't get this passed, perhaps some of the member town officials might want to come and visit and do a locker room walkthrough to kind of see for themselves. I had a noise issue when I was at UMass and I took the head of the Board of Trustees for the whole presidential, um, system and had him walk through so he could actually experience it for himself. And things changed pretty rapidly.
Anybody else? So Scott, can you, um, go over with the board the kind of timeline we're under for making this decision?
So we have a, we have a regular board meeting next Monday, the 15th. So that's the regular board meeting for the month. And so that, that obviously provides us with another opportunity to, um, consider these surplus funds. We then have two Mondays, the last two Mondays in March to finalize, um, the budget that I'll be presenting on Monday, April 4th. Just want to make sure that Monday is fact is April 4th. Um, I think it's April 5th, I'm sorry, Monday, April 5th, where we'll be, um, I'll be presenting the budget at a, at the annual budget hearing. But then the budget, the board in a special meeting following that on Monday, April 5th, will adopt the budget as the board's, um, proposed budget. So we have three more Mondays between now and April 5th to get the hard work done. You know, the, the, the board still has the opportunity to make modifications on Monday, April 5th, depending upon any comments that we get from members of the public. But again, your, your timeframe at that point is, is pretty much any last minute changes as opposed to anything as, as difficult as this. So, so basically we have, we have three weeks beyond tonight to, um, resolve these challenges.
Thank you, Scott. Joe?
Yeah, a couple more things. I think Jean made an excellent point about, you know, town leaders coming in, looking at the building. You know, that, that always, you know, leadership changes all the time. One of the things I just want to remind people about too in our towns, the three towns, is that, you know, our facilities committee has done a, a, I think a very, very good job of identifying and also fixing these problems. And I'd just like to remind some of the leaders that, you know, that it takes, it takes a lot of time to be planning that what we do, i.e. the windows. You know, we got two and a half million dollars worth of windows that were nobody's fault. And, and, and as far as town leadership or the board, it was, uh, you know, when this school was built, there were some particular items that were, you know, I would say that they were, uh, Taj Mahal type items. They were, some of them were new products like the windows in the high school. But, but we, 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 we don't look at these things as a, you know, let's, just, and that's what happened in the past, is people just let that go for 12 years and when they could have fixed it under warranty. So I, again, I just want to, we have need for all of these things. And Scott, the point I was going to make is that you're only looking at 21, 22. Rob has articulated about roof. We have, we have other needs besides the roof in 23, 24, 25 that we are going to need to start looking at. One of the things that Scott Flair has been working on and with, you know, his new role with our town and with Andover has been the emergency generator. There's, there's, we have to start having these conversations with what is, what do we, what do we truly need? Where do we want to have money go to? And again, it, it, this all is great conversation. Lori made a great point about trying to go back and get money next year. You know, when our debt is reconsolidated or, or downsized, that is in the whole, that isn't, that's up to the taxpayers. That isn't up to any Board of Selectment or Board of Finance in any of these towns to give us any kind of false promises with that because you, you, you don't control that. The taxpayer controls those types of decisions. And we have to make sure that we are making intelligent decisions, what's in the best interest of Ram and not the three towns. Because even though they, they do fund it, we have to be, we have to be honest with people. And, um, we, we, we see the air conditioning there. We know there's a floor. Rob's made a good point about it. You know, maybe it's not the right timing, but, you know, there's a lot of things in this building that are 20, 20 year, going on 20 years old that we're going to need to have funding for. And I go back to my earlier comment about the design. And maybe the business manager should talk about this. The, the, how this, this capital fund is set up and, and what we're allowed to do with that fund, just to remind everybody, because it didn't, it, it was never in place five to six to seven years ago, actually 12 years ago. And it's, it's, it's a great mechanism for us to budget and have ways to, when times are tough, that we, uh, like last year Scott mentioned, we took money from that capital surplus money to cover our DOT project contingencies. You know, if, would we, would the three towns have given us that money to go back and, and say, hey, we need $180,000 for contingency if we didn't have it? You know, so I, I, I think we have a lot of things to discuss. I don't think we're going to get to them tonight on here, but, uh, I, I'm just throwing these things out to, for other board members to, and we also, to Jessica's point about security. You know, we have, we're funding security on a $40,000 a year program. Why don't we take that off of capital for next year? And let's, let's fund some of those things. We all have needs. So, uh, I think we, we need to do, probably have some more time to, as a board, to figure these things out and present, uh, what our options are. But clearly I think the AC is, 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 you know, is a positive one. And I think we could probably all agree on it needs to happen. Thank you.
Stephanie, if I could just follow up on, on Joe's comment. You know, the, the facility subcommittee and Mike Schleyoffer have, have, I think, done a really nice job of, of kind of spreading out some of those, the, the more expensive items, all the capital items. But, you know, if, if you look two years down the road, you know, we have, we're earmarked for the replacement of boilers and chillers, you know, that there you're looking at, if you're looking at $700,000 in, in replacement costs, which, you, you know, those don't last forever. And as I think Joe and Rob mentioned, two years down the road, we're looking at, at potentially the roof replacement. And that's a $3.2 million project. So there's, you know, if we, if we don't do some of these now and we push the more expensive items down the pike, you know, they're going to start colliding with what are already very expensive items in the budget. And, and the thinking was certainly to coordinate some of those with the, um, the reduction in principal and interest. So it, you know, part of it is not accidental, part of it is, is by planning. So it, you know, and I think that the, the committee has been very cognizant of the fact that if we don't get to these jobs when we've earmarked them, the chances of ever getting to them become slimmer and slimmer as those even more expensive jobs, um, start to, you know, rear their ugly heads. Again, chillers and boilers and roofs and those sorts of things. And those jobs are, are at least planned, you know, just two years down the road from us where we are right now, so.
Judy, did you have something else? Judy, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do, Stephanie. Thank you. Um, I'm thinking facilities might already have this information. Do, um, do we have for a school of a similar age and size to Ram, do we know what their capital expenditures are a year? And, and I'm asking that not Scott necessarily for you, but like Rob has a lot of information or facilities.
Judy, if I could just chime in on that one, I think that, you know, one is what we do have is the life expectancy of a lot of the items that a new building has to maintain and eventually. and eventually replace. And I think that, again, if you, if you look at where the items are placed, just about everything we've replaced has shown evidence that it has in fact reached its maximum life expectancy, whether-
And Scott, it's not, it's not just for me. I'm, I'm, I'm actually thinking, you know, for people in my neighborhood or where I live is, is what I'm thinking, because I've seen, you know, we've had the engineering studies, we've had people come in. I, I, I mean, I'm actually pretty aware of that. And, you know, we've talked about the life of carpet and that we've overlived things. Like, I, I guess what I'm just saying is, capital expenditures are pretty big. And I'm not asking anybody to get additional work. Maybe it's something Eva would have through Casbo or something. I'm, I'm not sure. But I just think it would be a good, a good, if we have it, or if anybody on facilities has it, it would just be an interesting thing to, for folks to see.
I, this is Jean. I, I'm all for data. If you're asking Judy for data, which is comparative, is there a list of peer schools? Or, I mean, we're not comparing ourselves to every school in the state, because there's such a differential there. So I'm assuming there's a, a peer school list that you would be doing comparison data from. Can you address that, Scott?
We would have to look into that, Jean. I'm not, I'm not aware of a kind of an apples to apples list out there, but we can certainly look into that and see what we can find.
Yeah. And from my perspective, I don't want to waste a lot of time on this. At one point, I know years ago, school construction had information on those kinds of things, but, you know, and, and with the awards of how much the percent they were paying different districts, but I don't even know if, if that's around now. My point was just that upkeeping buildings is expensive. And I didn't know if there are other buildings, like Jean said, about the age of RAM. But then we get into that maybe RAM wasn't built perfectly, as we've heard from our engineering studies. So-
You nailed it. You nailed it, Judy. Wasn't, it's not a norm, it's not a, it's not a traditional school. This school was built wrong in a lot of different ways. And that's why our capital has been increasing. And, and that is the point, you, you nailed it. Because we have, when they designed this school, they cheaped out in a lot of, a lot of ways. Air conditioning, everything. We had the lawsuit with the flooring, and that's why a lot of our flooring is not, is failed. So, that's, that's the next one point.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know. Maybe we already, the engineering studies are older now, but they were helpful. So, I could gather some of what I have on that, you know, just, just to share with people. But I'm not sure if I have the most up to date.
Yeah. Judy, and I, I think some of those comparisons are, in some ways, dependent upon what the district itself is willing to spend. So we can look at what different districts with the same aged building, what their cost for capital expenses are each year. But, you know, you, you have to take into account that some districts may not be putting any money into their capital, or not enough, or, you know, like if you looked at RAM, I mean, you would, you would, you could conclude if you looked at, you know, eight years ago and back, you know, that we don't have any capital expenditures. Therefore, the building should be essentially free. But now we're paying for some of those, that, you know, the lack of attention to those. And it, it seems like we might be spending more than maybe we should. Where had we spent a consistent amount each year, it might have looked a little different.
Or if we had, or if we had an annual budget for, for capital, that if they had an annual budget back at the beginning of this school for $400,000 a year budgeting, we wouldn't be in this boat either.
Right. Yeah. And I, and I, and actually, someone mentioned earlier that municipal districts, they can carry over 2% in surplus. So, you know, comparing a regional district, which there are fewer of us than there are, you know, municipal high schools and middle schools, they, they just, ability to carry over higher surpluses, maybe taking care of some of their capital expenses that way. So-
Yeah. No, no, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. And some have not had any money go over to those funds. Some have had the 2%. We all know that. So, I, I guess what I'm asking is if you have anything that you think would be helpful to share that, because Jean's point is, is well taken, is that it's hard to compare things that aren't exactly the same.
I'm hearing a lot of agreement that we have an opportunity to enhance some of our capital improvements for some things that are really needed. We don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. I think it would be great if we had scenarios like what Scott had put up earlier for us to look at. You know, we, I think we're kind of spinning our wheels right now, and we need some, like, some, that, a sheet that says, well, if we, if we do the air conditioning, then we can give this back to the towns, or say we decide to do the flooring, and this, that'll cost this, and we'll have this much left over. I think having, having some scenarios would really help us out at this point. And it sounds like this is going to be a prolonged process. I don't, you know, it sounds like some people are asking for information. And, you know, we, we, I think we're going to need to, to plan on discussing this further next week, at least during our regular meeting. I'm just trying to, to come up with a plan at this point, so we're not continuing, you know, to, to spin our wheels a bit. I don't know if anybody's in agreement with that. Joe, I saw a hand.
Yes. I, I, look, I, I'll be the bad guy here. I'll make a motion, because it's 8 o'clock, and I know everybody wants to get moving. I, I think we've, you know, we, we have need. So I'll make the motion that we spend the $304,000 on the AC unit, the flooring, and is Mike Schleyhoffer on this call?
He is, yes.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Mike, do we have, you have $60,000 in the budget for concrete. Is that enough money in the budget for concrete work?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then I would make the recommendation, we go with the AC and the flooring, and we give the, the remaining back to the towns.
I'll second.
I'm going to share my screen, just because I, just to confirm that this is what we're talking about. And I'm sorry, Rob, I interrupted you. So Joe, I think this is where you're talking about, the air conditioning units, the re-carpet in room 114?
I forgot about the carpet, but I would, I would say the, we do, what is the total for the, the AC, the engineering for the AC, the carpet and the room, the kitchen?
That's more than we have.
Yeah, that's more than we have. The kitchen itself is-
Eighty-nine.
A hundred and four. Yeah, $104,000. So Joe, we wouldn't be able to do all of that. The, um-
Well, we have a, we have a budget, right? So we have, we can put that money in capital, non-recurring, for that purpose, correct? Eva?
So I, I just want to clarify what you're, what you're asking. So-
I'm asking if we put the $304,000, and we, we have projects designated for AC, or the, the room, the kitchen, if it's not enough, we can allocate that money, some of that money towards, and next year, the following year, fund that, that, that project, correct?
Correct. So if there's any money left over from projects that are already completed, we can re, the board can reallocate those funds towards a project that they see fit.
So is the, is this estimate for 195 plus the 15 accurate?
For the, for the AC unit and the engineering fees, yes. That's, that's what we have as quoted information.
Okay. I, I will, I made the motion for the AC, the engineering, and for the kitchen flooring.
I'll second. And again, that's not saying we have to do the kitchen this summer. If Scott doesn't think that works, we can do that next summer, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, this is, to me, yes, that, yes, because you can start putting away money for that.
Yep.
So did you, could you repeat your motion, please, with a dollar amount?
Sure. I recommend, I make a motion that we spend the capital, the 1%, $304,000 for this, for two, three items. AC in the athletic wing, engineering services for that, and the kitchen flooring for whatever that number, well, it doesn't matter, for those projects. The entire $304,000 goes to those two projects.
Did Rob second that?
Yes, I did.
So are we in discussion?
We're in discussion. I'd like to make another motion, though.
You what?
I'd like to make another motion. But we can go through discussion first, I guess.
You have to make an amendment.
Is it an amendment? What do you?
Well, you have to go through discussion first, and then you have to make a friendly amendment.
Go ahead, go for discussion.
I, you know, I, I think we've had, what, how long have we been meeting? Almost two hours. You know, certainly people put a lot of time and effort into the board event, and I appreciate everybody's effort and perspective. I don't think we should vote on that tonight. I think that we asked for some more information, and we should get it. That doesn't mean that I'm going to vote no to these items. As a matter of fact, at this point, I think I, you know, am probably convinced that we do need some of this. But I think we do need to, in my opinion, show the respect and the attention of really looking at these matters and understanding this a little bit better, especially when we had three towns tell us that they, that they understood the request for returning the money. And I, I think that we need to give it more time. I, I don't think that we should vote tonight on this.
I, I think that the towns are in support of each other and have done a good job communicating. However, I do think we, we do need to put some money into capital. I would like to see the air conditioning done, and then the remainder sent back to the towns as a, as an offer of goodwill, as much as we can this year.
Are you, are you making an amendment, or are you asking them to make one?
I would. I would like to make an amendment with that. We do have 1.5 million reduction next year. I think since the floor can't be done this year anyway, I think, I think we could put off the floor, pay for that next year, because we do have such a big reduction. So I would like to see a compromise.
Hi, this is Jean. I would support, I don't know what the protocol is, because I, I never learned those rules, Robert's rules, never kind of agreed with them. But I, I agree with Stephanie. The air conditioning seems like it's a priority item. If Scott thinks the floors can wait another year until we have that reduction, that, that sounds reasonable compromise to me.
Well, I think I'm going to go back and, Rob, answer your question. The timeframe for the floors is probably about four to five weeks, since it's such a massive job, and you're, you're talking about some plumbing work and whatnot. If, if, Stephanie, what you, what you're suggesting, the, the cost of the air conditioning and the engineering cost is 210,000, that would leave $94,959 to go back to the towns as an offset to their levies. It's approximately-
And did you answer my question, Scott, about the, the, I'm sorry, maybe you already said that, the priority item of the floors. Can it wait till next year?
I, I believe so, yes.
Scott, can you repeat the number, please?
Thank you.
We have to figure out if the gentleman who made the motion will accept the amendment. But Scott, can you please repeat that number?
Sure. So the, the cost of the proposed air conditioning project, including engineering costs, is $210,000. That leaves $94,959 to go back, to be used to offset the levy for the three towns.
I'm sorry, Scott. Joe's motion, he also mentions carpet. And without it in front of me, I can't, I can't remember what that exact item was. But it was three things, I think, if I'm, if I'm trying to take notes accurately, the AC unit and the kitchen floor, and the carpet.
Correct. And the carpet is $16,265. I'm responding to Stephanie's proposed amendment.
I'm, I'm sorry, total cut out.
I'm going to, your question is how much is the carpet?
Yeah, that, I think the focus from the, in this amendment discussion, the AC was discussed, the kitchen flooring was discussed, but the carpet from the original motion was not discussed. I just was clarifying that and making sure that was addressed. But then you cut out. I'm sorry. So I didn't hear what you said.
Stephanie, were you including the carpet, or were you just including the-
No, I was not including the carpet. And I think Joe, Joe made a change in his first motion to just do the AC, engineering, and the kitchen floor. So I think the carpet had been cut out completely, from both the original motion and the amendment.
Correct.
Okay.
Stephanie, can you state again, the kitchen and the AC unit?
The original motion was the AC, engineering, and kitchen, kitchen flooring.
Yep, yep.
The amendment, the amendment was the AC only, and to give the remainder back to the towns. AC and engineering, and give the remainder back to the towns.
Okay.
Have we heard, are they accepting the amendment? I'm confused.
Stephanie, this is Joe. I, I think every board, I'm just trying to push this along. It's 8:20. We've heard, I'm not, like I said, every board member should have an opportunity to speak what they, what their opinions are. And, and I haven't heard from some people. So, you know, I, I'll hold out until everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Okay. I'm going to go down the line. Judy?
I, I could support the amendment. I won't support the original.
Mary?
I'm still sort of processing it, but I think I, I think I could go for the AC system.
Kathleen?
I understand the need to give money back to the town. I get concerned. I know the kitchen floor, I remember walking through there a couple times already, the last couple years. So, I don't want it to bite us later on, we're not prepared to cover that. So, I don't know.
Okay, Jean?
Hi. Yes, my husband just called. I had to pick up. He's in Indiana.
Okay. So no discussion on that?
Pardon me?
No discussion on the amendment?
No, I've had my, my questions. I would like to see the data that we requested, but not right now.
Yes.
Lori?
I'm sorry, Rob, were you saying yes?
This isn't, oh, Rob, this is a discussion on, on whether to accept the amendment.
Uh, then no.
Okay, Lori?
Can I just clarify- Can I just clarify, since I'm taking notes? Uh, Rob, you were saying no, you would not support the amendment, meaning you would, you support the original motion?
Correct, thank you.
Um, my opinion, um, I, um, I, I, I think I have to support the original motion.
Okay, Jessica?
Trying to turn everything on and off there. Um, I, I would support the amendment. I think that with the floor not being able to be done this year, it seems like it's probably going to be pushed off a little bit, that that's something that can be planned for. This way, we're kind of finding that compromise of taking care of something that's really extremely needed within the building, but then also meeting some of the needs of the towns and the taxpayers there. So I think it's a, a good balance.
Hey, Joe?
Well, I thank everybody for weighing in. Uh, I, I, I can withdraw my motion, but I, I think that, that the intent of this meeting is to determine whether or not we're going to give money back to the towns, number one, or we're going to do what we're, 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 we're talking about coming up with some kind of compromise. So this is, this is where I've always been, and I've been on this, this board for eight years. So it won't be a shocker to anybody, but I am in favor of keeping the whole $304,000 because we have need. I am more than happy to come up with some other, you know, the carpet, I think, is important, whatever that balance is. But, um, you know, I am not going to be in favor of giving back the towns money when we've been doing this. This is how we get into trouble for all these years. We continue to pigeonhole ourselves with not doing what we're supposed to do, and our job is to fix problems in this school. So I'm going to, I, I'll stick with the emotion, but I would be happy to drop my motion as long as we're, we're going to have a, a, a solid conversation about, you know, are we returning the money? Or are we going to come up with some lesser thing? Because that's, that's where I think we need to be. But I, I, I just, I want to be fair to everybody, but I'm having a hard time with the, the, you know, the, the pressure from the towns to come back and give us, give them, give us, give them every, you know, give them something when we, we are really working hard to fix our problems. I hope that makes sense to the board. It's, it's not about, always about facilities, but it's, it's trying to have that balance. And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to negotiate, but I'm not willing to negotiate giving the money back to the towns. And I'm 100% on that.
Joe, I'm, I'm confused. Are you with, are you withdrawing your motion or leaving your motion? Or are you supporting Stephanie? I, I really, I apologize, I couldn't follow that.
Well, I, I, I think what, what I'm trying to get at is, I, it's kind of procedurally, I guess, I'm not going to withdraw. I, I, I don't disagree with Stephanie. But I, the only thing I disagree with is that we're giving the money, all the money back. And I think that's, that's the, that's the, what we're all wrestling with. What does the board really want to do? Do you want to give some, you want to give money back to the towns? Or do you want to keep our 1%? And I, I haven't othered in myself and maybe a couple other guys. What is, what is, really do we want to do? And that's the conversation I think we need to have.
I think you, I think that's my ambivalence right there is because we want to support the towns, but ultimately, we want the towns to also support our budget overall.
That's correct.
It can't just be that we put aside our priorities to give back to the town, to give money back to the towns, and then go into budget season and then have them ask us to reduce more. We've already said we can't, we're giving you back money and we're putting things aside that we have been, um, we decided as a board, we're priorities for RAM in itself. So there's got to be a give and take, and I think, you know, that's part of politics of struggling with the budget, and I hate it. Um, I really want us to be able to do what we think is best for RAM without having to worry about whether or not the other towns will be upset with us because we didn't give them the 1% back and then ask us to reduce our budget even more. Um, that's not in the best interest of the students for RAM, of RAM, and especially when we're making choices about other things that kids may need. And Judy talked about, you know, mental health before. Well, we know that there's a potential for our students to need some more supports, and those can, those might not be available for them right now because we don't know what they're going to need until they walk through that door. And I don't want to give up on our students for a 1% or $300,000 that, you know, we're, we're, we're parsing here to the, you know, two hours into it, you know? I just want to be sure that, uh, that is clear, that, you know, I'm okay with giving the town back money as long as those towns support us and help RAM move forward. I'm also okay with saying no and saying, you know, this is what we've been charged to do, and this is what the school needs, and ultimately, there's a chance that our kids are going to need more, and we need your help. This isn't about money, it's about kids.
Scott, do you anticipate that if we, if we need to discuss this further next, at the next board meeting, next Monday, that we'll have time to do that?
I do, Stephanie. Right now, the agenda items we have for next week are pretty, um, pretty thick. I, I don't, I don't foresee any lengthy agenda items other than this.
Don't you have to vote on the motion that's on the floor and second it?
Well...
We do, but I...
We can withdraw.
I can withdraw the motion, Vinnie, if, if I, if, if we're, if I hear that we're in agreement, and I like what Kathleen said, I think we, I, and I want to be fair. I'm just trying to say Judy's got, she's got some data she wants to have, and I would withdraw the motion if we were going to postpone it till next week and we have better, more time to come up with a, a more cohesive plan, because this is a shotgun right now, and I don't like operating like this.
I can, I can withdraw the amendment because I do feel like we need more time to discuss.
Okay, I will, I will draw my motion if we will, we will agree to move this to next, next week and have a better understanding of what, Stephanie, you and Scott should come back to us and give us a presentation of, what, you know, give us some ideas, maybe individually feel out the board members and see what their, their take is. And we go from there.
Okay, I also withdraw my amendment to further discuss this next week as well.
So we want to take a vote on that? Or do we need to take a vote on that? No? No? Okay.
Yeah, we don't.
Not if we're withdrawing.
Okay, thank you.
But I think, Stephanie, you said, Joe, you bring up an important point in that, coming into next week's meeting, I think it's important for each board member to, to wrestle with that question, what is it you want? Are, are we, is the hope to cut it down the middle and use some of it for capital and some of it to go back to the towns? Is the hope that we should use all of the money to support the capital needs? Because, well, that, that's a, that's a decision that each board member is going to have to make going into next week's meeting. And I think it will, it will, it will eliminate a lot of this type of discussion if, if we all come in with a better understanding of what, what are our goals with this money? Is it to compromise, is it to use all the money for, to fully support capital? Or is it to give it all to the towns?
I think, Scott, to add to that, this is Judy. I, I think additionally, for, for many of us, we really want to make sure that the towns continue to support us. And we don't, we certainly don't want to, um, be made or forced to do something, but if there's, as I think someone said, a reasonable effort for everybody to work together, and if that can mean greater things for RAM in the, in the long term, in the long run, um, that's something to consider as well. So I think ongoing, um, relationships, because it is a regional board, and there are some unique needs and, um, and politics. And, um, you know, I, I, I want every penny we can for education, but as important, if not more important, I want the complete community to support us as, as well as we can. And I, right now, need to understand that a little bit better, and maybe other board members do too, I'm, I'm not certain. I need to listen to some people from my community a little bit better before the next meeting.
Okay, so Scott and I will put it on the next agenda, and there are scenarios for everyone to look at.
So Judy, this is Jean, Judy. If you have, um, if you have meetings scheduled with the townspeople of my town, I'd like to be included in them, if that's possible. I don't know if that, I mean, I don't know if we can do that because we're on different sides of the aisle. Does that work?
I'm unaffiliated, Jean, I'm not on his side of the aisle.
So if you have a meeting with Greg and folks, I, I sort of like to be there if that's possible, but I don't know.
I've never even met Greg, Jean, but yes, fine, I, I'm happy to communicate with you.
Is there any other discussion?
Stephanie, Joe, last comment. I, I would love to support the emotional side of this if we could fund it, but we can't with, so it's important to understand that, that we, we can't put money, you know, to, to, to the points of our students that need the help, unfortunately, in, in these types of funds that we're allowed to do. So, you know, I, I would support spending some of that money towards the social, emotional side of things as well. But if there's a way we can do that, Scott, you know, I...
Judy, can you mute, please?
Joe, I would suggest that, um, you know, as I presented with the Esser funds, that, um, and I can share this real quick. So we're receiving, um, 126,000, almost 127,000 through our Esser II funds. And if you look at what we're doing there, that money's going towards counseling services, it's going towards student loss of learning services. So we're, we're using that grant money to earmark it towards some of those mental health challenges and learning challenges, which are certainly integrally entwined in that, that mental health piece. So, you know, the, the money that we're talking about here, capital is, is not appropriate to be thinking about for those, those types of, of things. But we have grant monies that we're earmarking towards that. So I think that, 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 those areas are well taken care of. In addition, with the imminent, assuming imminent approval of the stimulus funds at the federal level, we'll be getting additional grant monies, which will, quite frankly, allow us to devote additional funds towards some of those mental health issues. And, and when we see those funds, and I'd love to say that we're going to see them, I'm sure we'll see them within a couple of weeks at least, we may be able to use some of that funding to reduce some of the COVID-related items in the operating budget. So Stephanie, you asked me, you know, will we have reductions to the operating budget moving forward? There's a, there's a very likely chance that we'll be able to address any of the COVID supplies, any of the COVID personnel requirements due to cleaning the building, some of the software things through that funding. So that would be a, a significant chunk of this budget that we would be able to eliminate, and that would bring the, that would bring the budget down. I, I'm going to say, again, I don't know what the awards that we'll be receiving are. I know that it's, it's, we're told that it probably will be somewhat substantive. And I'm going to say that we probably could reduce the budget. You know, we, we may be looking at a 100,000, something around those lines, if the money is substantial enough to address some of those COVID issues. But again, Joe, that you're, you're correct in that, that any of the monies that we're talking about here tonight really are only capital offset levies or sick and severance pay, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Anybody else before we move on to public comments? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I just have one question, it's Mary. Um, can, I'm, I want to make sure I understand the information that we're going to be getting. I think Scott's going to be collecting for us. I'm interested in knowing what historically we have had as a surplus at the end of each year. I think that's one thing that was asked for, correct?
Yes, correct, yep.
That would, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to public comments. Any public comments? All right, I'm hearing none at this time. And motion to adjourn.
Seconding.
Okay, I guess I made the motion. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. We'll get back to you with that information, and thanks for coming tonight.